All right, we will open the assessment hearing for one hundred eighty-ninth Lane, one hundred ninetieth Lane and Dolomite, six thirty on July seventh, twenty twenty. And Shane, the engineer, would you like to start us off?
I certainly can, Mr. Mayor. All right, so I'll probably go through and give a presentation on kind of my side of the project, the engineering side, and then Bob, the city attorney, generally talks a little bit about the legal process.
Even though there's only three people in the audience, we do know that a number of people have called in and said they'll be watching from home, so this is recorded and you can see it on YouTube. If you have neighbors that weren't able to be here tonight, they can watch proceedings on YouTube.
So the three roads we're talking about, one hundred eighty-ninth Lane, one hundred ninetieth Lane and Dolomite Street, indicated in red. So just a little bit of background, we have over sixty miles of road. The roads in this project constitutes just a little bit less than a mile, and so the reality is, is the city doesn't levy enough money and the state don't tax levy to fully fund all the necessary road improvements, so they use a combination of assessing the benefiting properties and the general tax levy. Now, this project is programmed for twenty twenty in our capital improvement plan. The pavement is about twenty-seven years old, so generally they say a road is designed to have a twenty-year design life, so it's well in excess of that. We, it's in about the condition we'd expect for its age. We're seeing a lot of areas of pattern cracking and eligator cracking, and we think if something's not done soon, it's going to lead to a more extensive repair. Just a little bit about pavement, so pavement is a mixture of rock, sand, and then oil. So the rock is the structure of the pavement, and that's what actually provides the support. The sand is kind of the filler material that incorporates the voids between the rocks, and then the oil is kind of the glue that holds it all together. So this is a pavement core, this is probably going on ten years old, it's been preserved in my office, but what happens on the elements is it doesn't look like this after a while. So it starts out with this smooth surface, it's black at the surface, but over time the pavement oxidizes, we lose that oil from the surface, and then we start seeing the exfoliator. So that, what happens when we lose our oil out of our pavement, and it's just a natural thing that happens over time, is now our pavement becomes more brittle, we lose that glue that holds everything together, and it's only a matter of time until, like I said, a more extensive repair is necessary. So over time, we would expect to see what we call pattern cracking, and this is, this is a fairly severe level of pattern cracking.
But this is not a picture of one hundred eighty-ninth or one hundred ninety, that picture we just showed.
That's correct.
That is not off that, because we have none of that on that road, so I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, maybe if we could just address, we do have a, for questions at the end, and we have been out to one hundred eighty-ninth and one hundred ninetieth Lane, and there is pattern cracking present. Maybe it's, you can't see it if you're driving thirty miles an hour, but we do have a section for public comment at the end. Another thing that happens when we start to get that cracking in the pavement, we have precipitation events, water enters the gravel base through the cracks, when any, when too much moisture gets into those cracks or into the gravel base, the material becomes saturated, if any material becomes super saturated, it loses its stability, and so when a pavement load or a load is applied to it, we have uletrium in the pavement. In the wintertime, the exact opposite thing happens, water in the base will freeze, and this particularly happens when it's, you know, we have warmer temperatures during the day and it cools off at night, so when that moisture freezes, it expands the volume by seven percent, and that provides an upward force on the road, and if you've ever been on the road and you feel all the bumps at very constant intervals, that's because of the water in the aggregate base expanding. So you're probably aware that there is what they call a gas tax whenever you purchase fuel at the filling station, and a large portion or fairly significant portion of that gas tax goes to MinDOT for research, and so they've done a lot of study and research about pavement deterioration, and generally they found that pavement kind of acts in this general pavement deterioration curve. So when the pavement is in new or good condition, it stays in relatively new, like new or good condition for quite a long time, and then once it starts to deteriorate, it deteriorates quite rapidly. The interesting thing, I think, is that the first forty percent drop in quality happens over seventy-five percent of the pavement life. So if you have a road that's designed for twenty years, it would show that first forty percent drop in quality happens over the first fifteen years. Now, the next forty percent drop in quality happens over just twelve percent of the pavement's life. So what we're trying to do is catch this road when it's somewhere in here before a more extensive, like a total reconstruction project is necessary. So this project is right in this range, a reconstruction of the surface. The, of course, a do-nothing has no cost associated with it, the routine maintenance such as crack filling is so small that it doesn't even show up on this graph, but there is a small value there. And again, we're trying to do the project here at the reconstruction of the surface before a total reconstruction is necessary. So the proposed improvements involve reclaiming the existing botuminous, paving a new botuminous layer similar to this, reestablishing the shoulder, and also replacing the culverts. So if you attended the first public improvement hearing, at that time, we had not anticipated replacement of the centerline road culverts, but it is included in the project now. We heard from quite a few residents at the public improvement hearing that Dolomite Street isn't really necessary, could we just leave that gravel? We did take a look at costs for leaving that gravel versus paved, and of course, the initial cost to make that gravel would just be to reclaim the road and then add some gravel to the surface. So if we were just to reclaim the road, recycled product doesn't, it actually gets so hard that it doesn't, cannot be shaped well with a road grader, so we'd have to add a surface three and a half inches thick of gravel to grade. So the initial cost is actually lower to turn it to gravel, but then when we figure in the six hours of grading annually, and then one inch of class five to the surface every other year, we actually think that maintaining this gravel road, just a small segment, would cost more money over a twenty-year lifespan than paved. So just a little bit about the process, this is the process of reclaiming the existing botuminous pavement. The reclamer is going from right to left in this picture, and so this will be the existing pavement on this side, they've already done this pass, and this machine is grinding up the botuminous layer with the underlying aggregate base and making a uniform base product. So essentially, we're recycling in place. After that material is recycled in place, the road grader shapes the material to prepare for paving, we then compact it, and then pave the new botuminous layer. So we have standards in the city where we pave all roads in two lifts, so it'd be a base course of two inches and a wearing course of one and a half inches. So again, this is a kind of a pavement deterioration curve, whether or without maintenance, and we're trying to bring the condition of the road back, back up to the top so that we can maintain it and hopefully obtain another thirty years out of it. This is the proposed typical section for the project, again, three and a half inches of botuminous pavement and two lifts. We will have the existing aggregate base plus the existing botuminous, so if we have, let's say, eight inches of aggregate base now underneath the existing botuminous layer after it's all ground up, we automatically have increased strength because we have a thicker base section now, and then we'll have a nice thick botuminous section on top of that, so it'll be a stronger road once it's, once it's reconstructed or if it's reconstructed than it is now. We did obtain bids for this project on June second, received bids from four reputable contractors, and based on those bids, the project cost estimate is now three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So again, all the properties that have direct access onto the proposed roads would be assessed for the project. The city is proposing to pay fifty percent of the project cost plus any cost overruns. Previously, we had twenty-nine benefiting properties, but two properties combined, so now there is only twenty-eight, so that's resulted in slightly increased cost per unit, but based on the city paying fifty percent of the project cost, it would lead to an assessment amount of six thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars per unit. The assessment can be amortized over time, so you can choose to pay it off in full prior to November of next year, otherwise, if you do nothing, it will simply be added to your taxes at the same time the county collects your first half and second half real estate taxes. In regard to the schedule, you were all here or invited at least to the February thirteenth public improvement hearing. Since then, the city council ordered plans and specs, they approved those plans and specs and authorized after bids on April thirtieth. On June second, we had the bid opening, so last time we talked, we were just estimating what the bids would come in at, and now we have actually actual contractor bids to base our numbers on. After tonight, pending the input from the residents, the next step would be for the city council to approve the bids and award the contract, assuming they were to do that at their next meeting on July fourteenth. It would take a couple of weeks for contracts to get in order, the project could start as early as August of this year, with a fairly quick construction timeframe of three to four weeks, and completion in September. So we've done enough of these hearings to know that one of the main questions are always what are the alternatives? There are always alternatives, one, we could just delay the project, we could not do anything. If we were to delay the project, we would expect the condition of the road to gradually decrease, the repairs in the future would likely be more expensive. The other thing is the city's ability to fund that repair would be unknown. Right now, we have planned for this project, and we have a funding mechanism for this project, but the future is uncertain. So that was my quick presentation. Generally, the city attorney also shares a few words, trying to answer questions before they maybe come up. When you do have a chance to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and that's it.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Bob Rupe, I'm the city attorney, and I just wanted to point out what the public hearing is for tonight. As Shane mentioned earlier, back in February, we had the, what they call the improvement hearing, that's the first of the two required public hearings. That one was to hear from residents about whether you felt this project should move forward or not. The town board then after ordered the improvement, ordered plans and specs to be prepared, had it sent out for bid, bids were received, we now have a little bit firmer cost estimates as the city engineer outlined for you in his presentation. Tonight is the assessment hearing, this is your opportunity, you've all received notice about this proposed assessment amount, this is for your time to give feedback back to the town board about that, the project and the proposed assessment amount. If there is, for example, sometimes people have it where at the assessment hearing, we found out that some partial is not billable for whatever reason, you know, things that were not known to us, that's something that you would want to raise with the city council tonight. The other thing that you need to be aware of is that if you object to this project and you wish to preserve your right to go and appeal the assessment amount in district court, tonight you have to submit your written objection before the close of this public hearing. And so with that, unless somebody has any specific questions, I will turn it over to the mayor, who can open it up for public forum or address any questions to staff.
All right. Before we open up to public forum from our last meeting, we had a couple of things, lots six and seven, there was a question of buildability, which lots combined?
Sixty-seven, twenty-one, one hundred and ninety.
Yeah, I believe those were the lots that combined.
All right, so that's already been taken care of. Going through the list, property number fifteen is actually an address off of one hundred and eighty-fifth. I'll make sure that that is caught before we do our final numbers. Both the mailing address and the home address are actually Berry Hill Farm.
So the property address for property number fifteen is sixty-five, ten, one hundred and eighty-ninth Lane.
One hundred and eighty-fifth.
One hundred and eighty-ninth Lane is?
On my sheet that I got here from Helen, it's sixty-five, ten, one hundred and eighty-ninth. Property owner's Cliff Row and the taxpayer's mailing address, so I've got something different in mind. You've got sixty-five, ten, one hundred and eighty-ninth Lane. I didn't think we went down that far. I think the cul-de-sac is still in the sixty-sixes.
Right, yeah, I don't have an answer for you right now, Mr. Mayor, but.
So we just need to check that out, if it's replacing another property, then these numbers don't change, if it's inadvertently put in there and we have one more property than we think, it'll change our numbers. The culverts we had talked about back in February, and they were going to have those done as part of the project, we discussed turning Dolomite back to gravel, we did the study on that and determined it's more cost-effective to have it blacktop. In addition to what you had said, Shane, one of the difficulties with maintaining gravel, when you've got blacktop at both ends, there's no good transition. I know from my neighborhood where you're trying to go from gravel to blacktop, we're doing it on two ends, and you're going to get pits there, you're going to get, you're going to have trouble on both those ends, in addition to the cost that you had said, it's just not easily maintained, so.
Right, I agree.
But it was asked at the February meeting, and we did the investigation.
Right.
And any council members that have anything else from our February meeting they wanted to bring up? A question was brought up on the east end of one hundred and ninetieth where we did the patching, it looks like it sunk in a bit, will that be addressed? If you drive it, I was out there today, and there's quite a big dip where we felt it in last year.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the project includes reclaiming the pavement, and then after the pavement is reclaimed, it would be shaped and a test roll would be completed, and if there were any problems observed at the test roll, then there would be a directive to do additional work, but at this time, there is no additional work planned in the project, so that would.
And that test roll would reveal that?
The test roll would reveal that, and that could be a potential, you know, if there were additional costs for that, then that would be a city cost because the city is paying the cost overruns.
Correct. Anything else from any council members from their February notes?
I think you got it.
All right, anything from the residents? That's what these hearings are for, we appreciate you coming out and joining us tonight.
My name is Judy Schultz, and I live at six eight twelve, one hundred and ninety-eighth Lane, I've lived there for just about thirty years now, and I've always felt during most of these thirty years that there's been really good communication between what was on here and where I live. I just feel I kind of fell short on this whole thing, and I know you guys were out there last fall, taking care of some of the problems at the end of one hundred and ninety, but we didn't hear about this plan at all till after the first year, I think, February or March, but, you know, a little more lead time on this could have helped all of us try to prepare financially to deal with this. Things are not easy right now, especially with the pandemic, it's not a pleasant time in my life, anyway. But anyway, and then the other thing that I was very interested in is Ramsey put a deal out in their newsletter about a plan in the committee to talk with their people, their residents, some three options of how they wanted to try to address these issues that are really ongoing. One of them, a monthly fee, like on maybe on your income tax, you know, just a smaller fee that just comes out, and then that goes, addresses all of this, or the assessment like we're talking about today, or property, you know, or property taxes. I've kept, and, you know, I'd like, I think we should talk about some of those ideas because having this assessment when you're retired and, or you're losing your job, or it makes it hard on people to address this, and the case six percent is not fine in my mind, so anyway. So on behalf, I went neighbor hopping today and talked to all the neighbors on one hundred and ninety except two that I was unable to get in touch with, and I talked to one neighbor that he was in agreement with what you guys were planning, and I said, that's fine, I don't want to, you know, try to tell you otherwise, but I just wanted to get a temperature gauge of what people think about this, but everybody else feels like it's, was very short notice, and it's going to be hard, really hard financially on our people. And so I do have an objection, and on behalf of my neighbors, I have their names and addresses listed on here, so I'll link it up to you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So I don't know, do you want me to go through the objections that we listed, or?
Yeah, if you go to them on the record.
Okay. The objections that we listed were damage to this one limited area that has been repaired and re-repaired, and I'm very skeptical whether this is going to work, but that we have to incur this kind of money for an area that could be repaired on by itself. We intend that repairing all of this area for the reason of the damaged areas is not necessary, and we would like another firm to look at it, but I don't know if that's really necessary, I'm not sure that we need to do that. But we are in a pandemic and costs incurred at this time will be devastating to a lot of families in this area, and we just feel like the notice was very short, and they're trying to save up to take care of six thousand dollars as soon as heat, and maybe that, I don't know, I heard you say, don't put it off even a year, but, you know, that would give people a little bit more time to get their ducks in a row and know that, okay, I can pay six thousand dollars by whatever time, so. So that's all, but thank you for letting me talk, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, just on your fifth note there, the, you know, the first notice probably came out in January.
Was that?
No, we had a meeting in February for sure.
Okay.
So that first notice would have been.
So that was, that's on, okay.
And the billing, you know, it would be, those who choose to pay it upfront and not have any interest could do that by November of this year if they had the cash, otherwise it goes on the taxes over a ten-year period, starting in May of twenty twenty-one. So it really is, it was, was more than a year's notice to when it would be assessed on a ten-year basis, so just that's, one of the things we've been trying to do is get enough information out there ahead of time so that we're at least a year before we show up on taxes.
Okay.
The six percent, I'm not sure if we've settled on that, do we know that for sure at this point? We don't know what the interest rate will be right now, we do know that there's a requirement that whatever we have borrowed the money at, the state requires that we increase the percentage on that, and Bob, do you want to?
Yeah, I can address that, we use six percent as a placeholder because the interest that we have to charge, although the statute that we're operating under says the town, the city council can set the interest rate or whatever, but the, what we, and we noticed for this, six percent, because that's sort of on the high end, but we're going to borrow money to finance this, and once we have borrowed that money and we know from the bank what the interest rate we're going to get charged, by law, because we're a government, we have to charge a point and a half to two percentage points above that. So if we borrowed the money at two percent, then we have to set your interest rate at three and a half or four, by law, and the reason that the state legislature did that was because we have to pay that debt back, it's under the full faith and credit of the city, and so in order to make sure that there's enough money flowing in, even when people don't pay their property taxes, and there are people that don't for whatever reason, or let it go tax forfeit, or something, that's supposed to give that cushion, that's why they do it, that's why it's mandated, so.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, that's why we're, that's what this is here for tonight. So generally, we use the six percent as a placeholder because we don't know yet, and then, once the financing component is done, and part of that also is going to be kind of trying to get a head count of how many people, if any, are going to prepay, because if people are going to prepay that amount, we don't want to borrow it and incur interest cost ourselves on that, which the city has to pay back if we don't have that interest generating that money over a ten-year period. So again, it's a little bit in flux, but that's why the notice said six percent, generally, if we are able to, in the past, the city councils, if we were able to save on interest, that interest savings is passed on to residents, and it's the same thing with the cost of the project. If the project cost, you know, for whatever reason, or not, I don't think they would be, but the costs somehow are diminished, then that savings goes to the residents, and although we're supposed to hold this whole hearing and everything again, I've never heard any resident ever complain when we're giving them a break. Now, if the costs do go up, the city council, as the engineer said, has already said, will pay for the cost overruns, so it can't go up, but there's a very small chance it could go down, and the interest rate is still not determined, because we don't know what we're borrowing yet.
All right, well, thank you.
And Judith, can I ask, just on the tail end of item three here, you have a note about two residents, do you know what, what does that say there? you have a note about two residents, do you know what, what does that say there?
I can't read or write either.
Oh, the two residents that are, you know, down on that corner to get their area paid, of course, they would like to have, they.
Oh, they want, but we turned to gravel last year.
Took that all off, yeah, anyway, so that's all.
And, and so of the, you, you didn't talk to two, and one of the people you talked to said?
Agrees.
Agrees, okay.
And then nine around here, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Danny at 6737-189th Lane. I was wondering about businesses down in the end, why they don't have to pay an increased amount for running through the whole entire neighborhoods that we have to pay for, and run the damage through? Since they're business, they're homes, and they're a business too, so why can't the business be charged as well to balance the cost? 50 that she goes through a day, plus you have another big weekend once a month on top of that, she can fill neighborhoods. She now installed parking lots down on the end out there, so it's a, you know, a nice left-hand street. Nonetheless, it's still a business that's running through the entire neighborhood.
You know, we, we've got that because we do have, throughout the city, we have interim use permits, where people do run businesses in residential districts. There are conditions to those, so it's one thing we certainly can look at is the conditions of her business. There were limitations on deliveries and number of activities, so we can certainly check and see if she's within her agreed-upon conditions of her interim use permit. But we've determined, as we're doing this throughout the city, that if people are abiding by their conditional use permits, the conditions of those use permits, that typically we identify that there is not reasonably more traffic than a family of, you know, a, a large family would have. So you have two couples or a couple driving in and out multiple times a day and children driving in and out. We typically look at businesses, are they the equivalent of that many comings and goings in a normal residential house? So when that conditional use or interim use permit was put in for the boarding facility, there were conditions, we'd have to see if they've exceeded that. And it is one of the things that our staff is, is working on this fall, we're reviewing all the interim use permits. But it's just been determined at this point, because we have that throughout the city, that home businesses would not be charged extra. And we're also not charging by the size of the lot, we're just charging by PIN numbers. So it's, it's something we've determined, we certainly can review it as a council, but it does apply to many businesses.
Well, traffic is a central difference, considering that she runs 16 runs in and out in the morning and in the afternoon, and she is capable of doing whatever she schedules for a weekend or something. That's way over what the entire half of the world.
You're saying 16 runs is?
Yeah, and that's eight people coming in in the morning, eight people going out, a lot of people that are doing, you know, the horse.
That's two or three times a day.
And then you see that in the afternoon, the home is, the traffic is just outrageous, you know, exact times of when they come in and out, because they come in groups at home. And Dolomite is just a non-use road anyway, so we wouldn't care about the transitions there anyways. No one, no one has to use it, nobody has to use it whatsoever.
Yeah, it was, it was brought up at the first hearing, that's primarily a walking path. It certainly is from an emergency vehicle, important to the city for emergency vehicles to get around in those homes in the back area.
Well, the Johnsons are at the end of 190th. And then you have the boarding down in the cul-de-sac at 189th. The road isn't happy to use, there's access to Jasper straight up. No one lives on Dolomite itself, no one relies on Dolomite.
Yeah, I, I understand that it is, has no residents on it at this point, so.
You're still driving.
I know, I just have to drive in today, so.
Mr. Mayor, just to expand on the emergency access issue, I mean, so the, as a number of homes increase on, say, a dead-end cul-de-sac, the need for a secondary access increases. So, and the thought is, if there's a, an accident or something that is blocking the road, or maybe a, a tree falls down during a, a storm, and then there's an emergency on the end of that road, there's, there's a necessity to have a second way in or out after a certain number of homes is reached. And so, when we talk about having Dolomite for emergency access, you know, that's really the, one of the drivers is if we have a tree fall down on, say, 189th Lane, but then there's an emergency on the end of that, now we can come around on 190th Lane through Dolomite and, and access that property.
Anything else?
I bought a ham at 6812-189th, and just to point out here, this business at 6612-189th not only has cars that frequently use 189th a lot, they also use 190th, so that's, they're way over whatever I think people expect. The second thing is, we've got 189th and 190th, that neither of those roads ever had a pothole in their lanes until engineering, some engineering company came down the road and drilled holes in it.
Yep.
So now we have holes on, on both of those roads, so we're locked into this. You know, we're going to have to replace that road because soon as we have winter, it's going to be potholes. We have not had a pothole in that road in 30 years, or since it was born in 91 or whatever it was. So I'm not exactly sure, if you go on a Jasper, 189th and 90th, 190th, come up to Jasper, Jasper is full of potholes, it's a piece of crap of a road. It was, it was put in there at the same time as, as 189th and 190th, but nothing is being done to that road, yet we're going to replace this road now. And it's sort of being stuck up our butts because now they drill holes in the damn thing all the way around the thing. So I think that, you know, I'm not sure who the genius was that said, if we don't do anything, that's going to turn to gravel. But I think when Lori said that in this letter, you know, we can just let it go to gravel. That's, that's the stupidest statement I've ever heard. We can't just let this road go to gravel, we paid for the darn thing, you know, that's, that's, so.
Just to clarify, wouldn't, wouldn't have been Lori that says that, so. Lori, Lori, Lori signs the letters for the council.
All right, because she signs it, I'm not going to blame her for it. So you didn't sign it, I won't blame you for it. But my point is, is this road had nothing wrong with it, except that the east end, where that, where it's a swamp and it's always been a problem, it's been fixed several times. Otherwise, 190th and 189th are in good shape. Of course, you can see aggregate on the road and that your engineering discussion is how it should be done, makes good sense to me. But this road is not that bad. Go to the road that's bad, like Jasper, do Jasper. You know, I mean, if you feel like you really have to fix something, just because you want to fix something, fix Jasper. But other than that, I mean, it's, but, you know, here we are, we've got 189th, 190th with potholes all over the damn thing because you've got an engineering company come in and drill holes in it and not fill them up. Okay, I'm through, thank you for listening.
So just, just to clarify on Jasper, there, there are certain roads in town that are declared state aid roads. 185th and Jasper, you know, they're, they're roads that qualify for state aid funding.
Okay.
And we don't qualify as a city for state aid funding until we reach 5,000 residents. And we are about 48-plus right now, so we're just short of 5,000. So the assumption is, with some of the potential housing that's going in, that, that our population will hit the 5,000 shortly. At that point, then we get significant funds from the state to work on those roads. So anything we do on Jasper right now would have to come out of the residents' pockets. And there's not that many homes on Jasper. But if we were to wait, you know, probably within two years, we would have state monies to do that road right. So rather than making a 30-year road out of it now.
Makes perfect sense, I, I admit that makes perfect sense. So why not let the residents on 189th, 190th say, okay, this road is getting to the point where it's going to have to be replaced, so two years from now, we're going to replace it.
Yes.
But no, all of a sudden, January or February, we're going to, here's the plan, we're going to do this, and if you don't want to do it, we can let it go back to gravel.
So, and again, just to clarify, like going back to gravel, one of the options always with blacktop roads is when they get to a certain point, you're going to have to completely rebuild them, in which the engineer's shown the steps. When you get to that point, it's much more costly per mile to do that.
I agree.
Um, one, and, and a couple of places in town here where they said, we don't want to do that, their choice was to go back to gravel, we'll take a gravel road over that. Now, most people that have been on a blacktop road don't want to go back to gravel.
No, of course.
But we, we save that as an option, saying if the residents truly would prefer that, we can accommodate that as long as it doesn't cost the city more money in the long run. And that's why we looked at Dolomite, it's not heavily traveled, it needs to stay open for emergency access. But in the long run, it would cost us more to go back to gravel than maintaining the blacktop.
That, that makes perfect sense.
But we, we don't ever want to hold out a threat to neighbors that, if you don't agree with what the council wants to do here, we're going to just continue road to gravel. That, that goes back to. So we don't want to ever have, be perceived that the council's saying, if you don't agree with us, we'll just let your road go back to gravel.
Well, that's what that letter right there says, you want me to read it?
That's not helping with your answer.
Okay.
Yes.
It, it makes me think that, you know, this is, you're going to do this whether you like it or not, or you're going to have a gravel road.
Well, that's, there's the reason we have the hearings, we have, we now know our, our total cost, what it's going to be, what, what the maximum would be for the residents. And, and quite frankly, you know, when we started this last January, and, and for the record, we have a five-year plan. So this, this was actually discussed last year, and we put it off till this year.
Who was it discussed with?
There would have been, did 189th come out last year? We held off on that.
It would have been nice, you know, even over a year ago, if we'd have known that this, the plan was in 2020, we're going to rebuild this road. And this one held off a little bit. And, and the other question I had, and nobody's answered yet, why did we hire an engineering company to drill holes in the road without knowing that we're going to do it?
The, you know, I don't, I don't think there was an understanding of not plugging the holes when, when we drilled them. What we wanted to know is, we didn't want surprises. Knowing what happened at the end of 189th and on Dolomite with the water on either side, we needed to know what was underneath that. Because when that road was constructed, the township didn't have road standards. And one of the things we found is just south of that development, on Ebony and Garnett in the Willow area, there is insufficient base on much of the road, and they're having a lot of problems down there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, no, you're right, that's.
And so, so we had these projects, we said, go out there and tell us what's, what's the base on each of these, since it's unknown, because when they were built back in the 70s, there were no standards. Quite often, the developer would take, you know, field dirt, dirt out of the ditches and make the road that out of it. And so we were trying to say, let's not have surprises later, let's do it more than not.
They started drilling at Jasper and they've gone all the way to the end of 190th and all the way to 189th. So if they want to find out what's on the east end of that road, drill the east end of the road. But now they've ruined both of those roads. That's my point, is we've got holes this big that are not filled, and they're just going to be potholes. I mean, they are right now, but luckily, it's summertime and they're not going to freeze them. And make.
Water down underneath and lifted it, because it's also, it's an intentional trip hazard, it shouldn't be filled in professionally by anybody to do that type of work.
And you. Mr. Mayor, if I could just address that, that, that was supposed to be the scope of work. We hired a geotectical consultant to do those soil borings. And, and we didn't do them before, so we did, we ordered those soil borings after the public improvement hearing. So af- after we had that initial meeting with the residents and decided to take the next step of determining the actual cost is when we ordered those soil borings. They should have filled those borings, and if they didn't, we can get them out there to fill them as soon as possible. With that being said, also keep in mind, every new pavement has cores cut in it. These cores are cut out of a road that was newly reconstructed. And per DOT standards, you have to take so many cores per 500 tons, and then these cores go into the laboratory and they measure them for thickness and for maximum density. So on our new roads, three of these cores, these are four-inch cores, and the cores that you see are probably eight-inch cores, are bigger than this. But even in brand-new roads, three of these are taken in each lot. So it's standard practice to core new roads. We, we can fill them successfully without.
That's my point, is why wouldn't you fill it? I mean, I agree that you need to do core samples, but this is.
Right, so the reason that we haven't filled them is because we, we weren't aware, it wasn't our scope of work to replace them, and we weren't aware until now that they haven't been filled. So I don't know if the city's received any phone calls or any messages, but.
To my knowledge, this is the first that's been brought in.
Right, so now that we know, I mean, we'll get on the phone tomorrow and, and ask them to get out there right away to fill them.
Yes, we need, we need to get those filled in right away, either way.
Correct, either way.
But what to do in the long run, and, and as I was starting to say, when we started this, the discussion we had last year and the formal process we started beginning of this year, we obviously never foresaw COVID or any of the other excitement that's going on in the world right now, and so.
Just think how rich you could have been if you predicted that.
You know? Yeah, nobody would have believed me, nobody would have taken the bet.
They'd have lost everything.
But that being said, we are cognizant that, that people, finances are tighter. People may have lost their jobs, people may have retired early. And so that will be part of our discussion, you know, what makes sense at this point. We have to, as a council, take into consideration, because we've got, you know, we've got 32 miles of paved roads, that we have to, we're responsible to maintain. There's, there's a portion that the county's doing and then the rest of it.
I certainly recognize your responsibility. And my point is, can we just deal with the east end of those bad spots and maybe say, okay, a year from now, or a year and a half from now, we're going to repave this road, so we have some time to deal with it, so.
The, the question would be, you know, the, the cost would be significantly more to do a portion of it now and another portion in one to two years, it would be significantly more costly. So, does it make sense to delay that cost one year or two years? Will it, will it make a difference to the residents being able to save up for that as opposed to putting on their taxes?
My thinking is, is what if you just put up with gravel there on those, on that east end for another year? And the residents can say, okay, we've got a year to deal with this and we don't have to pay 6% interest, and we know it's coming. We had no idea what was coming until January or February this year, and now, here we are. And, you know, in January, February, when was the meeting? When was the last meeting we had here for yet? Whenever the day was, you know, it was still up in the air whether it was going to be done or not be done. Then all of a sudden, we've got engineering companies drilling holes through the road, so there you are, now, now we are sort of stuck with it.
And, and our, our assumption was, with core samples, we still weren't stuck. Because they, they certainly could have shown something underneath there that was going to change our cost structure significantly, which was the, the purpose of that. So we, we did not believe that, simply because the core samples were pulled, that we would be stuck with it. We did assume incorrectly, obviously, that once that they, the samples were done, that they would be plugged back up. Because there was no commitment at that time to do the road, so the intention was to plug those back up.
Sure, okay. Well, I appreciate your panel, thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else at this point? House member Ray.
I do have a question for, for our attorney, Rupee, Mr. Rupee. So the, the question was businesses, and we've talked about this before. How do you determine how much more you would charge a business based on their usage? But I'm wondering, by law, are you allowed to charge the resident and the business? Or it's just her property?
It would be, you have, the law says that you can charge different.
It would be, you'd have, the law says that you can charge different classifications of property differently. So the question then is, is this, is there a change in zoning? If it's one property in this proposed area assessment, in that proposed assessment area is residential, and another is a zoned commercial, well, clearly, you can treat the commercial property differently than the residential.
But if it's all residential?
But this is all residential. And yet, we've given some of these properties a permit, as the mayor's comment was, as long as those properties are operating within the terms of the permit that was being issued, because they're, they're all conditional, and they can be revoked if they're not complying with the terms of the permit. So they're not forever, if, if the city finds that a business, a home extended business or something that is violating the terms, we give them a notice and we give them an opportunity to start to comply. If they still don't, then you usually will get me involved, and then I will go in and work with the city to revoke the permit. And unfortunately, we do that as part of our job, as we're presenting cities and towns. So it is something that typically, if we find somebody that is not complying with the terms of their permit, we give them a very clear, concise letter outlining where they're deficient, give them an opportunity to cure, and if they still won't abide by the terms after we've given them notice and an opportunity, then it's up to the city council to decide if they wish to proceed with the next step, which would be holding a public hearing. It's sort of a reverse of giving them the permit, same thing. We give them a notice, we have a holding, we hold a hearing on whether to revoke or not, and the council says, yes, it's revoked. Then if the other, if the property owner doesn't like that, then they have to appeal to the district court, and we're in a court...
So, so just to clarify, though, in regards to assessments for road projects, we cannot charge one resident more than another if they're all residential properties?
I think it would be very, we could attempt that, but I don't know that we would be successful, because the resident that we are attempting to assess more, we'd have to prove that they were a different sort of classification to the satisfaction of a district court judge, an Anoka County District Court judge.
I think we can take this up further. One of the things that I've noticed with our county assessor, when the assessor's going around, those that do have home businesses, they are assessing the residence under residential and the business portion of their property under commercial. So there is an assessment difference, which may or may not, on the property.
It's, but it's not quite, that's for assessments, and you can appeal your assessment amount, of course, but this is different. This is under the four twenty-nine, which is the statute that gives us the authority to assess benefiting property owners, and it's not quite as fluid as the assessor would have. And so, again, as long as we comply with the terms, we could, if, if the city wanted to consider that, it's something that we could look at, but it, it would be difficult. And I can't, the problem with this is, I can't guarantee you success. Yet, if that assessment, higher assessment amount is not upheld by a judge, then the city absorbs that.
Plus the legal fees involved.
Plus the legal fees and everything. It's not covered by insurance. The League of Minnesota Cities, your insurance carrier, does not handle anything dealing with Minnesota statute four twenty-nine, which is this statute.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ruby. And then I have a question to City Clerk Strike. There was the question of the letter. So was, I'm just wondering, what letter did you receive? We have the one that your signature is on, and then the frequently asked questions. And I'm trying to figure out where you came up with...
It was on the questions, I think.
Okay. That, if you don't like it, it'll go to...
It'll be...
The last card. Do you have any other options?
Yeah.
Krypton Street could remain in its current condition.
People ask questions.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, there's not a... Okay. So it's, that is an option. Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to get that out. Thank you very much.
So I guess then, so we've already sent out the notices for this meeting and the second here, public hearing. Can we look at that verbiage going forward, so it is not misunderstood that if we don't agree to do something, you're all going to go back to gravel? So just, I don't know if we can wordsmith that, because you put these together. Correction?
That's correct.
Okay. So could you, you and Lloyd just kind of look at that, so make sure that it is clear?
Sure. I mean, maybe, maybe a better option, or maybe a preferred alternative would be list several options. You know, it gets a little bit hard to list all the options, because the future's on, you know, delaying the project five years. Bob and I, in another community, had a road that was in a little bit better shape than this road, and they had a fire in the springtime, you know, like April of the year, and that road had to be reconstructed totally, because the weight of the fire trucks just, you know, it pushed down where the wheel paths were, and in between the wheels, the pavement and all the gravel base heaved so bad that there was nothing salvageable. So at that point, the cost of the project significantly increased. And I still remember, this is a project that was constructed in two thousand and twelve, and the assessment was twelve thousand dollars per unit. And so with a newer road with pavement that still has fresh oil in it, that's not fragile or not brittle, that is less likely to occur. And that's just something that we can't predict. So we can certainly remove that or reword it. You know, just because of past history here, some actually, some residents actually prefer to live on gravel. And so I don't always see that as a bad thing, and I apologize that it was seen as a...
We could just ask that we could look at it just a little bit. And Shane, you mentioned too, as far as the issue with that other, that other project. One of the things we don't know is what is the future, and what are interest rates going to be, what are costs going to be two years from now?
Good interest rates.
It's very, it's very possible, this could look like a sweet deal two years from now, and it could be double, you know, up to double of the cost. So the unknown is the scary thing, as far as what's, what's at cost.
I would say the interest rates right now are bituminous cost. Because a big part of this cost is the bituminous, and right now, oil is about as low as we're going to see it.
Right.
Correct.
That's, that's part of our consideration, you know what? We can't predict the future, like I couldn't predict COVID. I can't predict interest rates or bituminous, but, you know, for a while here this spring, they were actually negative numbers on, on oil prices. That's a big part of our cost, is the oil and the bituminous. Interest rates are at record lows, so we're just thinking, this seems to be a good opportunity to have the best price, rather than wait a year or two and find out that our costs went up significantly and the road didn't improve in that time. So the one thing that we do need to address is, you know, part of what we've turned back to gravel to repair the base was on Dolomite, which nobody's really excited about, so that's not a big deal. But obviously, one hundred and ninetieth, at that northeast corner, that's a bigger deal. It's pretty rough right now, and anybody who's going down that far has to go over some rough road. So we have to address something there, and we're not likely to go in blacktop a portion of it now and a portion of it later. So that'll be part of our discussion as well. But certainly, we have, you know, nine residents who have weighed in that we can, we'll consider. And as we said, right now, we're scheduled to make a decision by our Tuesday meeting of next week. We'll have a discussion at a workshop later this week, so we will discuss this thoroughly as a council, and we'll, we'll make known what our logic is. And thank you for attending, and thank you for contributing. It helps us understand what's... And certainly, you know, it's, it's something to, be able to communicate as far out as we can, even if we don't know numbers, that we need to do a better broadcast. Here's our five-year plan. Here's the roads we're looking at, so those residents can start at least psychologically preparing for what's coming.
That idea, I'm expecting.
Thank you for that input as well. Thank you.
Close the public hearing?
Anything else on that one?
What's, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
There won't be a decision until next Tuesday.
So next Tuesday?
Yes.
You know, it might happen to have a left meeting.
The decision, the decision will be either to not proceed this year, proceed in some limited fashion this year, or proceed with the full project as scheduled.
So we'd be voting right there?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
And that will be our council meeting Tuesday night. That meeting starts at seven o'clock, and I'm not sure where on the agenda it'll be. Sometime after seven o'clock on next Tuesday, same location.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. We will close the hearing on one hundred and eighty ninth lane, one hundred and ninetieth lane, and Dolomite. Everybody who's here for the Krypton, et cetera, if you want to make sure you've signed in.
If we can just sign into the long-term data, huh?
Yeah, I'm guessing if they missed one area, they missed them both. So...
Krypton Street, Merle's Lane, one hundred and eighty-third Avenue, and Potassium Street. And what we're doing is, is the engineer, Shane Nelson, will give a brief presentation for those of you that are here. For those that couldn't make it tonight, we're recording this so they can watch the whole proceeding online, so that everybody has equal access to it. So we will be, starting with the presentation of our engineer Shane, and then Bob Ruby, our city attorney, will give a brief presentation, and then we'll open it up for discussion for the council and for the residents at that point. This is the second of our required public hearings. This is an assessment hearing. We now know what the cost would be after receiving bids, and so we have our all-in cost. Shane will touch on that, and then we'll have further discussions after we're done with the presentations. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Shane Nelson, the city engineer. It's better if I stand over on this side. I think I can still see everybody okay. All right. So this is the second hearing, as the mayor stated, and we're talking about Krypton Street, one hundred and eighty-third lane, Potassium, and Merle's Lane. Sorry, I think that's one hundred and eighty-third avenue. So just a little bit of background, we have over sixty miles of road and now then to maintain, and just simple fact that we don't levy enough money to pay for these reconstruction projects with a general tax levy. So the city's adopted a system in which they assess fifty percent of the project cost to the benefiting properties and pay the other fifty percent out of the tax levy to make the levied money go a little further. And this project was programmed for the year twenty twenty. More background, Krypton Street is about twenty-four years old, one hundred and eighty-third avenue, Merle's Lane, Potassium, slightly, slightly newer at eighteen years old. We're seeing a lot of problems on Krypton Street. One hundred and eighty-third, Merle's Lane and Potassium aren't nearly as bad. They're starting to show their age. They're starting to lose the, the black shining surface. But overall, rural section, which means there's ditches and culverts to convey stormwater, and the stormwater system seems adequate. So just a little bit about pavement. So when pavement's new, it looks like this, has a nice, black, smooth surface. But pavement is a mixture of rocks, sand, and oil. So the rocks that you see in the pavement, this, this pavement core actually has larger rocks. The rocks are what provides the strength. So they are what transfers the load, provides the strength. The sand in there and the smaller, the smaller aggregate, that's kind of the filler material, that's to provide a well-graded mixture. And then think of the oil as the glue. The oil holds everything together. So when a pavement is new, it looks like this, black surface, nice and smooth. And this, these pavement cores are actually several years old. They've been preserved in my office, so these have not been subject to the effects of weathering. What happens out in the, the real world is the pavement over time degrades. We lose the oil from the surface of the pavement, it turns a gray color. And as we start to lose the oil, that's, again, that's our glue. We start to lose the sand and the smaller rocks, exposing the larger rocks. And as we start to lose the larger rocks, the pavement degrades. It also becomes more brittle over time. So just naturally, pavement degrades over time. Generally, that's kind of the accepted, is twenty to thirty years without structural improvements. So this is, this will be a picture of a pavement that has been severely degraded. This is what we call pattern cracking or alligator cracking. And the problem with all these cracks is that they let water into the underlying aggregate base. When water gets into the underlying aggregate base, that base becomes saturated. And when any material becomes too wet or super saturated, it loses its stability. So you think a quicksand, even a stable sand, if it gets too wet, loses its stability. Then we have a load applied to the surface. That load causes the pavement to deflect. And even new pavement, when it still has a lot of oil in it and it's more pliable, it can only take so many of these deflections until it starts to crack. Older pavement is more susceptible to cracking. In the wintertime, kind of the opposite thing happens during a, you know, a freeze thaw cycle, where it might be a warmer temperature during the day. We have some melting occurring, water running into the cracks, and fill those cracks. And then at nighttime, it cools off again. It freezes. When, when water freezes, it increases the volume by nine percent. So what happens is that pushes up on the, of the pavement. So if you ever drive down the road in the wintertime, and if a road's really bumpy or has a lot of bumps, every crack, this is what's going on. It's that water in the underlying aggregate base freezing and expanding more than the rest of the pavement. So y'all are probably familiar, in Minnesota, we have a, it's called a gas tax, and a large portion of the gas tax is used for construction projects, but they also dedicate several million dollars per year for research and development. They have a, a big research and development test strip on one eighty-four, and they do testing in other locations. They put a lot of research into figuring out the pavement deterioration curve. And what they generally found is that when pavement is new, it stays in, in good or relatively good condition for the first several years, and then once it starts to deteriorate, it deteriorates more rapidly. The interesting thing here, that first forty percent drop in quality happens over seventy-five percent of the pavement's life. So if the design life for a road is twenty years, what this is saying is that first forty percent drop in quality would happen over the first fifteen years. Now, the, the next forty percent drop in quality has fallen, occur over twelve percent of the pavement life. So that next forty percent drop would happen in just about two years. So once a pavement starts to get old and brittle, and starts to develop cracks, it tends to develop, or degrade rapidly. So this is just a bar chart showing different types of improvements that we program or schedule. What we're talking about tonight are, would be a structural improvement, which is the construction of the overlay on one hundred and eighty-third avenue, Merle's Lane and Potassium, and then a reconstruction of the surface on Krypton Street. So we're trying to do the repairs in this area before that cost per mile gets into the seven hundred thousand dollar range. the $700,000 range. So the proposed improvements on Krypton would be to reclaim the existing bituminous pavement, pave a new bituminous section, three and a half inches thick. So this is actually a four inch thick core, could be just a half inch less than this. So we'd have a substantial new pavement section. Also, when we reclaim the existing bituminous, you know, let's say our existing bituminous section's a little bit thinner, but then let's say there's eight inches of aggregate base underneath there. When we grind all that all up, now this becomes part of the aggregate base, so we, right off the bat, we have a thicker aggregate section, so increased strength over the, what's there now. We match all driveways, reestablish the gravel shoulder. On Krypton, we actually have a couple of problem areas, I'll just go back and get to those. So we have one problem area right in here, and another problem area right here by this curve. The area in here, we've done soil borings, and we actually think that there is a good subgrade there, it's just really wet. It's really wet because we have a tight soil, that we have silty and clayey sands for a subgrade, it's not allowing moisture to drain. And so when moisture gets into that subgrade in this area, it's causing, again, causing that instability and cracking. So we're proposing drain tile, basically beginning somewhere in this area and running down quite a bit of length of the project. There's a small section here where there's actually not enough gravel, and in that area there'd be a subgrade correction with this project. So on 183rd Avenue, Merle's Lane, and Potassium Street, it would be thoroughly cleaning the surface, applying a tack to provide a bonding layer, and then constructing a bituminous overlay, so inch and a half compacted thickness. So that, this would provide more structural strength, and the idea of this project is to get the whole area to last about the same length of time. So we want these roads to last a considerable amount of time before they have to be reconstructed, and by doing both of these improvements together is going to help us achieve that goal. Also be reestablishing the gravel shoulder and matching the driveways. This is the reformation process, so this reclaim machine has already made a pass in this direction, he's now turning around and going from right to left. The existing pavement is still present in this location, and this machine is, again, grinding that existing bituminous pavement, blending it with the aggregate base underneath, so we have a thicker aggregate base section and more strength. After that, work is completed, they bring in the road grader, they shape the base, and then they compact the base. After the base is compacted, we do a road test, make sure we don't have any soft spots, areas where the pavement might break up. We also do density testing in accordance with Minda specifications, and then after everything is passed, we would pave the new bituminous pavement. So we paved the bituminous pavement in two lifts, so you'd see this happen kind of in two separate, two separate days, probably at least a week or two apart. So what we're trying to do, again, we have our typical pavement deterioration curve, shown somewhere in here, we're trying to bring both roads up to the top or near the top, so that we can interrupt that deterioration curve and try to get these roads to last another twenty or hopefully even thirty years. So this is the typical section for Krypton Street, again, three and a half inches of the bituminous pavement, paved in two lifts. Our aggregate base would be the existing aggregate base plus the reclaimed bituminous that's mixed in. The road surface will be slightly higher than existing, so it'll be about the thickness of this pavement core, three and a half to four inches higher, and we would reestablish that gravel shoulder, and then bring in some topsoil on the edges to kind of feather it in on the insides. For the overlay roads, it's just one and a half inch wear course, so it'll be roughly this much higher than the existing elevation. Again, reestablish that class five shoulder, and since we're only grazing the road an inch and a half, normally there's no need to do any topsoil shouldering or feathering in that area. The last time we invited everybody in was the public improvement hearing. At that time, it was just to kind of gain the temperature of the neighborhood of whether or not we should proceed with the next steps of the project and get actual construction bids. So at that time, we just had estimates based on previous projects. Since then, we have prepared plans and specifications and actually bid this project. We opened those bids on June 2nd, and the updated project estimate based on those actual bids is now 341,000. Again, project area is kind of outlined on this exhibit, and each property is proposed to receive an assessment. The properties that would receive an assessment are all indicated in these blue numbers. So the city uses the per-unit assessment method, there are other assessment methods such as front footage and whatnot. Generally, those are applied in either like urban areas where there's sewer and water being installed, and it's assessed based on the front footage, or in commercial districts. Residential property per unit is generally the accepted method, and it's the method that the city of Nalden utilizes. There are twenty-nine benefiting properties that would be assessed if this project moves forward, and the city is proposing to pay fifty percent of the project cost, which would lead, result in an assessment of fifty-eight, seventy-nine per unit. That is the maximum assessment amount, so that would be the ceiling, if the project comes in lower than the estimated cost, the city council has generally passed those cost savings on to the residents. If the project goes forward, the, you'd be notified of your final assessment amount after the project is completed. You'd have the option of paying that final assessment off prior to November 15th, and you would not accrue any interest. Or if you do nothing, that assessment amount will simply be added to your property taxes, and the first payment would be due in, I think it's May of 2021, whenever your first half of your real estate taxes are due. So a little bit about schedule, the last time that you were all invited to come in here was February 13th for the public improvement hearing. Since then, the council had ordered preparation of plans and specifications, they ordered the geotechnical test. We prepared those plans and specs. On April 30th, the city council approved the plans and specs and authorized the add for bids. On June 2nd, we opened the contractor bid, so again, previously we were discussing estimates. Now we have actual bid prices. Here we are tonight at the assessment hearing, and the council is interested in hearing your feedback tonight on the project and the proposed assessment amount. If they choose to move forward, they would consider that likely at their July 14th city council meeting. If they award the bids, it takes about a couple of weeks to get contracts and everything in order, so the earliest something would start, or construction would start would be August of this year, and it'd be a fairly quick construction timeframe, I would say in three weeks, unless there was a really bad stretch of wet weather, being relatively even to complete this. So substantial completion would be in September of this year. We've done a lot of these type of hearings, and we've always hear, what are some alternatives? Can't we just delay it one or two years? Yes, there's always an alternative to delay the project one or two years. Generally, what we find is if you delay a project, generally the cost increase, you know, some of the deterioration that you're seeing now will worsen. 183rd Avenue, Merle's Lane, and Potassium don't require a lot of patching now, but if we delay it for several years, they might require patching prior to an overlay. And then just, the future's always uncertain. We don't know what oil prices are going to do, we don't know what the city's ability to fund these projects will be. Again, we have over sixty miles of roads to plan for, and this road has been programmed for 2020, so if it's not completed this year, they'd have to try to fit it in funding-wise with some other scheduled roads. So with that, that's all I have. I believe the city attorney will share a few words, and then when you do speak, if you could just step up to the podium, and remember to speak your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Shane. Hi, everybody, my name's Bob Rupe, I'm the city attorney. And tonight, as Shane mentioned, this is the second of the two required public hearings. The first public hearing was called the improvement hearing, that was held back in February, and that was to hear residents and decide to give guidance to the city council whether they should move forward with this project or not. Since that time, the city has taken steps to keep this project moving forward, planning, doing plans and specs, putting it out for bids so we could get a little bit better price estimates. You naced on that, the number of properties in the area, and that bid amount, we now know that the assessment would be about $5,879 per unit. If, the reason for tonight's hearing is that now you have that information available to you, is to give further feedback to the city council. And examples of kind of things I've seen in the, in other hearings have been, if there is a, if your property is not buildable, something like that, that we didn't know about, that's something to bring up tonight to the city council, because that would affect whether you should be assessed or not. Some examples have been, because of wetland issues, that were not available or recognized by the city or the town, that had to be taken now into account. This is also, if you have any questions or concerns regarding the project, this is your other opportunity to raise that with the city engineer, with myself, as the city attorney or this council. One thing I do want to bring out to you and make sure you understand though, is if you are opposed to the project, if you want to appeal your assessment amount, you must, before the close of this public hearing, submit a written objection to the city council stating you're opposed to this project, and you are preserving your right to appeal that assessment amount. And so with that, the other, I guess, one thing I would mention, because it was an item of concern for a lot of the residents at the last public hearing, and is that interest rates. They felt that the six percent interest rate was very high. I just wanted to let people know what we said before, that that is a placeholder in the notice. The notice says that we have to tell you what we think the interest rate would be. We use a placeholder of six percent. Typically, the interest rate is much lower than that. And the reason we don't know the actual interest rate yet is because we haven't borrowed the money that the city is going to be using to pay for this project. We borrow, the city borrows the money, pays the contractor for the work pursuant to the contract, if this project moves forward, and then as we pay our debt on that loan that we've taken to pay for the project, that's where the money from the assessments come in. By law, we have to have a little bit of a spread between what the interest rate we negotiate with the bank, or the bonding company, whoever's loading us the money, and what we charge you. And it's usually, it's point and a half to two percentage points. So until we actually know what that bank rate is that we're borrowing the money at, we can't tell you exactly what your interest rate is. So that's why the placeholder of six percent is used. As Mr., as Shane said in his presentation, interest rates are very favorable right now. So we typically will pass on any cost savings to you. The six percent though, because it was troublesome to the people that were here before you, I just wanted to raise that with you and let you know. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor for you guys to give us feedback and comment.
Thank you, Bob. From our previous meeting in February, we had a couple of things that were in question. I'm not sure where we're sitting on them, but there was one concern about weight restrictions, posting the road for weight restrictions. There are concerns about heavy vehicles, semi-trucks being in a residential area. It is within the city's ability to post weight restrictions. Water running under culverts, there was some question about culvert repair, I don't know if Shane if we've addressed that at all.
I recall, I did look through the notes from the public improvement hearing, and one of the residents had a concern about a drain tile that he thought was damaged by surveying of the road. So I had the address, I physically went out and looked at that property, I couldn't find any areas of drain tile that were, was damaged. And, you know, when we survey, there's no drilling or potential to damage the drain tile. So I really can't offer anything on that concern. As for weight restrictions, we do have the ability as a city to post a weight restriction that we see fit.
Down at the end of Krypton, there was concern about drainage, the neighbor draining down into that yard, and was there any need to consider drainage from our project standpoint versus private property? Did we look at that at all?
We did. The project won't change drainage patterns. You know, there is a pond down near the end of Krypton Street that drains through the culvert across the road and through another property, and it will continue to do that with this project. There's really no way to reroute that.
Alright, council, have anything from their recollection from the February meeting that needs to be addressed?
No.
Alright, we'll open it up to residents.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Amell.
I do have one question on the list that came out. Properties fourteen and fifteen. They both have the same address, but the same, I'm assuming it's just one does not have the middle initial on it. I'm just, is there not, I'm trying to see if, is there not a house on number fifteen?
There's not a house on the one in front.
Okay, so that's...
Right, because it's got the flag lot to the back.
Okay, the house is back on fourteen, so they just happen to own both. And because there's no house, there's no PID, and that's why we have the same, there's two different PIDs.
Yeah, there's two lots, same owner.
Lots of record.
Right.
Same owner.
Okay, but we have them listed both as the same address, 18292.
It may be that's the...
Mr. Mayor, if I could address, so the addresses that we use are the addresses that the county auditor has in their system, so it's wherever they get their tax statements. And if we see a difference in the way a name is displayed, it's because one property might have that middle initial on that property, and the next property, when they purchased that, they did not use that middle initial. So we utilize the county's records when we send out these notices, and so for that, for those two properties, I do see two different PID numbers, but the property number fifteen is just not addressed because there's no structure on that.
I just want to be sure that we did not notice somebody.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anything else from the council? From the residents, a chance to speak.
Chris Hammer, 18305 Krypton Street. I recall the budget was like two or something, forty, where did 380 come from by adding drain tile? I mean, I looked for the bid, I never found the bid online, but I checked, or estimated it, I dug in the Valden, I was able to find it one time, but I asked me to look, and look, and look, that bid never came up. And I just ran some quick figures without the whole estimate in front of me, and I was... And I was under the 240 that was there before. Where did the 380 come from all of a sudden? I don't know what the estimate was, but it was only 2 something last time we were here. Because our payment was a lot lower. And now it's 380. What change, bring it up 100 grand besides the 3 bids you got? And was your job awarded already?
Hasn't been awarded.
Has not been.
So Mr. Mayor, if I could, I mean, I think I can take that, take that question. The, it's a combination of the drain tile, and there's quite a bit of drain tile. It's, it, uh, no, it starts up in this area and it continues all the way down to the low point of the road where the pond is. That added at least $20,000 of costs. The other additional cost was for the subgrade correction in this area, which was out in the original scope. And the other item, somewhere in this area, there's a concrete driveway that has a pattern in it or is, will be difficult to match with a, cutting the driveway patching. So in this area, there is some additional cost for removing reclaimed materials, subcutting the subgrade, and then matching those between the, or matching those special concrete driveways.
I did look at the concrete driveways, where, they're actually a little bit of a hill. I mean, it can be done, I just don't know where a modern man can even, how, how that much.
Sure. Yeah, the, the bids were open, Mr. Mayor, the bids were open on June 2nd. We received four bids. North Alley, Northwest Avenue, Meyer Contracting, a park bid on it.
Yeah, that's what I said. I could, so it must have been out there, obviously, to make it on it, but.
Right.
Our office installed it.
Sure.
I could figure out numbers. I was thinking it'd be lower, now it's higher. So you just gotta, I mean, now I gotta pay six grand instead of four grand. I'm not complaining about ways to get done. And I let it get done because honestly, that patch has been on the road forever. Putting all the dirt in my house all summer. It couldn't have covered one with asphalt, you know, held up instead of leaving it dirt. Probably got people going 70 mile per hour around the corner. Not really careful of the weight, just put the speed limit aside and look. Creating the road a holdup with the weight, it's still a problem. You have the driving trucks coming to this construction, people do things.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, right now, the project does not involve replacing the sign, any traffic signs or installing new signs. So traditionally, the city, through its city maintenance functions, has taken care of signage. Something that could be added to the project, but is not included in the project now.
And there's no sign, people realistically think it's fixed by law.
Sure.
That's not right?
Yeah, the, the, if this wasn't posted before the law changed in, I think it was 2010 or something, it would be a 35 mile per hour speed limit zone. So that's something that the city could consider posting it if it, not posting now.
Or is that new number of the bids or at that number that it's for?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, there is some soft costs in the, in the project too. And right now, the, the bid, even the bid numbers are based on estimated quantities. They're not given quantities. Sometimes you come in slightly over those quantities, sometimes you come in slightly under the quantities. If the project comes in under, the city has traditionally passed those savings on to the residents. If the project comes in over, the city has already agreed to pay the cost overruns.
This isn't the final.
This, this number, the number that is proposed to be assessed as the maximum that, that you could be assessed.
Because I'm just amazed because the oil prices, like you said, are, I see them below average mix as cheap right now.
Right. Yeah, what we saw was prices were up over the winter months. So the projects we bid in December, January, February, the prices were, were up quite a bit, about 30% from two years ago. And this project, I mean, it just so happened to work out that it, it bid after, you know, the whole COVID thing and, and the prices were better than we had been seeing on a unit price basis earlier in the season.
But this is not the final number, so we still have a chance for it to go down.
There still is a chance for it to go down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Epple, and I live at 18370 Krypton Street. And I think it's lot number five, one that was just recently sold. And there was a hearing a few weeks ago for variance on that one. So they're gonna put up a large house, and I think it's 40 by 60 pole yard. Are those people here today at all? I think so. But how is the construction of that gonna tie into the road? Because I kind of hate to see the brand new road that sounds like it'll be beautiful, get all hammered up if there's a lot of vehicles carrying heavy construction materials or cement trucks or, or whatever. Have you guys thought that through?
I don't know what their construction start date is. I know it's flagged out right now. This, our construction would probably be later August.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the timeframe would be in on their concrete trucks and, and supply trucks would be on there, so.
I'm just thinking that somebody might want to look into that to try to see if you can't make sure that whatever, the heaviest, most wear and tear part of the transport of their materials into the neighborhood is gonna be, especially because if we have a real hot August, September, and then they come in after that. Do these roads need to cure for any period of time before they really firm up? Are they softer when they're first put down?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's a great question. And, and yes, they are more vulnerable when it's, when the pavement is fresh and when it's hot. So, you know, if it's, if we have a few 90 degree days and the pavement's fresh, we have some concrete trucks, yeah, they could cause some damage. Normally, by the time we get into September, we're starting to get those cooler temperatures at night and the pavement mat is cooling off better and they're not nearly as vulnerable. If, if the construction happens in winter, then we're, you know, that's, that would be ideal, but.
Okay, yeah, because they're gonna be, the only way in and out of that neighborhood is down Krypton, and that's the part that's gonna get the most work done. And so a pretty substantial part of that road would be at risk. And then another question I was trying to follow is you were describing how much higher Krypton is gonna be when it's done. So road surface is where it is now. When it's all done, it's gonna be that much higher than it is? Okay, so that seems like that's gonna require a lot of work to kind of match up the driveways to it. Is that a fair assumption? I just, we already have sort of a water pooling problem at the end of our driveway. And I'm just curious as to how the mechanics of that's gonna, if the road's gonna get almost five inches taller, my driveway is gonna be, the bottom of my driveway is gonna be quite a bit below where the edge of the road sounds like it's gonna be.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we, we do identify, right in the construction plans, driveway removal and replacement. And so in cases like this, if necessary, we go up to the, the right of way, which is 33 feet from the center line of the road, about 11 feet from the edge of the road to make that transition.
Okay.
Mark, your lot three?
Um, yeah, I believe so.
And you're, are you slightly up on a hill there?
Yeah, I am.
So your driveway is coming down and there's a pool before it goes out? So as Shane says, we will come in to 33 feet. So at that point, if there's some correction in your driveway, typically, we can work something out with the contractors so that you don't have a pool there. So we, we want to look at that before this construction begins and say, here's where we're gonna come in. If we need to do something different, then for an additional cost, you could pick up a transition from where we stop to make sure you don't pool. But yeah, coming down that hill there, if it's low by the ditch.
So, so if I run a tape from the middle of the road, 33 feet up my driveway, I'll have some idea of where it's gonna have, where the project cost is gonna end and where my cost might start to give it a slope that's gonna work.
And Mr. Mayor, 33 feet is the maximum amount we would, we would go. We look at each driveway individually. So we go, we actually obtain survey shots on the driveways and based on those survey shots determine during plan preparation, or we estimate how far we think we need to go. And then, once the construction starts, there's a second process of our onsite field representative looking at the limit that was originally planned. Sometimes there's some features that, you know, aren't visible from a handful of survey shots, such as, you know, there's a huge crack in this location or a settlement. And then they, they might adjust those limits as necessary. But generally, we only go, the maximum amount we would go is 33 feet because that's where our right of way ends. Anything beyond that, we need to obtain special permission.
Okay. So how will we find out and when, what that will look like? Does somebody come through the neighborhood before the construction starts and start contacting the homeowners or?
Our typical process is not to contact each homeowner individually, but we do paint the removal limit prior to the contractor saw cutting that. And so if there's any questions, there's a, usually a few days in where we can discuss that. Also, at the beginning of each project, we generally send out a written project notice, kind of informing you of the, the different contacts for that project. And so if you had a question about your driveway, I would say on a project like this with 29 properties, 27 of them will probably just let us do our thing and they're not very concerned about where their driveway matches. Maybe two of those residents would have some questions about the, the limits. And those two would just call the onsite field representative and set up a meeting and they'd go over it.
Okay, so we'll receive something in the mail that will give us some of that contact information?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. And this is my last question. I've got sprinkler zones, like most of the people in that neighborhood, they're gonna be right up against the road. The road's not gonna get any wider, but it sounds like the shoulder is gonna be wider than it is now, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. So, I mean, if those sprinklers are within five or six feet of the road edge, they're, they would likely be susceptible to damage. So the city's policy has been that, that we don't repair, replace those heads that are placed that close to the road edge. Usually the thing to do, if you have a sprinkler head right here, to go in before the project starts, yeah, just, just take the sprinkler head off so it doesn't get damaged, cap the line, let us do the construction work, and then as soon as we're done, you can reinstall that sprinkler head.
Okay, understood, that makes sense. All right, that's all I had. And again, just maybe find out what the construction schedule and the new house is gonna be so that we don't destroy it the first month it's existed.
Thank you. Other comments? Three times as many people and, and less comments. It's okay. Generally, understood with our new cost, this is still a good project? Maybe? Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll be discussing as a council and we'll have our decision by next Tuesday, our normal city council meeting. And we'll decide at that point whether to proceed and, and let the bids or not proceed.
So how soon after that will we receive confirmation of what's gonna happen?
Well, there'll be, there'll be notice on our website immediately after that. As far as residents, I'm not sure when notices go out to residents.
Generally, my office does not send out notices until the contract has been awarded, the contracts have been executed, and we receive the contractor's construction schedule.
And at this point, you would expect that to be sometime in August if we proceed?
Correct, right around end of July, first part of August.
So a week from tomorrow, we ought to be able to go out to the Now Then City website to find out if it was approved.
Right. Can relate, yeah. Councilmember Aindo?
Mr. Mayor, I, the, it was just a question on the notification that I was gonna ask at the last public hearing is, so we really don't have a, a set policy on when we notify our residents after the council has taken the vote. And I think we should have one. Either it'd be that it's on the website by a certain time period or a letter go out with, in so many days to the residents to let them know that this has been approved, either as is, or changed, or, or determined not to go forward by council.
I, you know, I, I would like to see an actual letter go out. And we assume people go to the website and check it out, but we've been contacting them, they've been contacted by the city. I think that it's a yes, a no, a modified version of it. I think it's appropriate to send out so people don't have to go look at it. And in addition to putting on the website, so if the council is agreeable, I think we ask staff to send that out once we've made a decision on exactly what we proposed.
So if you'd remember to remind me on Tuesday, make that motion once we approve these or change them or not go forward. Thank you.
And, and just a reminder to the council, as you're deliberating what we heard tonight, we had agreed that we would put these projects out together, though they're bid separately so that we can assess the neighborhood separately. It is one project. So if we say no to one, we say no to both. Any other comments?
Should I ask what the total project, estimate cost was?
The total project was, Dan, you got that there?
That's the 341.
So the construction bids or the total cost?
Total cost.
Uh, the other one was about to say in 388, I think it was. So 341 and 388 together.
Anything else? If you think of anything, feel free to contact city offices or, all of our numbers are available for the council. We will be discussing this at our Thursday workshop and taking the vote next Tuesday at our council meeting. Anything comes up, you're talking with your neighbors or you think of something after the fact here, feel free to contact us and we'll take that into consideration as well. If not, nothing else, we'll close the hearing. Thank you all for attending and taking the time, there's.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.